This conference will now be recorded.
So we'll call to order the monitor's select board on November 7th at noon AM. Currently, um, present in town hall, we have Justin, May Hook and Frank Abbott. And I think Susan is on her way hopefully. So, we have, so, just to follow up on that, Mike Earl is the...
He sent you the proposal?
He sent it to me.
He's part of UMass, right?
No, UMass is Mary.
Okay, oh, he's part of, that's right. Right, the Rachel group. So, okay.
Um, I just wanted, I had some thoughts, because I know one of the questions that we've had is, do we want a human resources director, like, a set number of hours or is on-call? My thought was that we would probably lay out a few, a few items that are on a regular recurring basis, and then, you know, the, the rest would be on-call, like, if there's a sexual harassment complaint.
Or a discipline.
Uh, or a disciplinary issue or an interpersonal conflict. One... I think, I, I was trying to think about, I thought maybe an annual review of all the policies would make sense.
Yeah, I, I think, um, I would, yes, I would agree with you. At the very minimum, we would do that. I think that, um, we still have to get the handbook across the floor.
I'm like...
Yeah, I know, but they can help, I mean, you know, um, and then there are any... And two is, I think we also need some, you know, a couple hours with them for strategic thinking, uh, what do we need? You know, you talk, look at some of the, okay, maybe we do have a training class for leadership, or something like that for the managers, you know, things of that nature. Get their, you know, get them up to speed on where we're at and all, and then have them come back maybe with like a, okay, we can, you know, X amount of hours doing this, X amount of hours of that. I like for them to talk about their experience, how they approach other towns.
So sorry.
Because a lot of the towns they mentioned, they're not a, it's not a 30-hour a week job.
Yeah.
I dropped that off.
Thanks. Yeah, I, that's awesome, she was telling me about it.
Um, we're just starting to talk about HR director expectations, Susan.
Yep, and did you say anything substantive yet?
We were waiting for you. I'm just trying to think about, okay, what are the expectations that we shouldn't have to, that shouldn't be on an on-call basis and we don't have to ask for? So I think one would be an annual review of all of the town's personnel policies. And then maybe it would make sense to set a date, so, you know, uh, a review completed by August 15th, just for instance. And then, that can kind of happen each year, and they're expecting it and we're expecting it. And if they have recommendations, maybe that process takes longer, but I feel like that's something that should be kind of expected every year.
When would we be expecting to change from year to year? Things that change in law?
Well, I think that things that change in law, you know, they have an expertise we don't, keeping up with laws, regulations, other towns' experiences, that something might have passed or might have done good. So I think, taking it from their set of eyes, we need to do that.
It's not a bad idea to learn something every year.
It's not a drastic amount of money, you know, it's not like, like this.
And some years, nothing might change.
Right, that's right, but we need to know that. Two is, what I talked about before we got here was something about strategic thinking, about, you know, maybe this year, full budget for leadership training or something for the managers, and things like that for development of managers.
So that would, that wouldn't come under the annual review, that's a separate thing?
That would come under a separate thing, okay.
Okay.
Um, I think, would that be a quarterly, maybe we could expect a quarterly in at the select board?
I think so, I think that we need to talk about where we are. I think we need someone that has, we don't, we all have little bits and pieces of the expertise, but I think we need someone that we can talk about, here's where we're at, how do we, you know, just... It, it's not only about getting up to speed on all the employee manuals, employee policy, but there's also a part about developing the management, the leadership. And there's, you know, I don't think it's a ju- a huge cost, because there's, you know, it's a small workforce, but I think that's part of what we need to do, you know, then we avoid problems in the future, you know?
I like both of those ideas so far.
But I, I mean, they have, you know, it'd just be curious to talk to these, because, you know, they have experience in smaller townships like ours.
So the, the concern, well, I was thinking about the sort of more day-to-day things, so I really like that you guys had that bigger perspective. Um, what I'm worried about is, it seems like it's very, I'm gonna call it intermittent work. Like, the day-to-day things, the big ones, we kind of achieved, so there's sort of ongoing maintenance, right? Like, we just redid the personnel manual, we, we instituted a bunch of policies, because there hadn't been any updates, and those are pretty fresh, so we definitely want the annual review. But, uh, from the day-to-day thing, since we don't have the HR person doing directly benefits or pay or any of those things that some big organizations would have HR doing. What, like, are we gonna be too low a priority level?
No, but I...
Because we only have a couple of hours a month or something, except on occasion when we have a, an issue?
The thing, I think you have to pay that price to, to have the expertise, you know? It's sort of like legal, you know, isn't one week, you know, you're making three calls to legal, governor or something, and then you don't do it for four or five weeks, and that's what we need, you know? And I can't help, we're not the only township that has this need, so, I, I just believe that this is, we need to find a partner that can go, you know, be with us for two, three years or whatever, and, you know, not have a revolving door, they get to know us over a period of time, they know our manuals, and they know the, you know?
So think of it more as a, like, retainer?
A retainer.
Paying the monthly fee to have access to the services and periodic reviews or something?
Yeah, we could say, you know, once a quarter, we want you to come into, okay, we may have nothing, that would be good news, but we may want to say we want to work on something, or we've heard something, or whatever, but we, we can't afford, I don't believe we can afford not to make that kind of initial investment, because it could give us some trouble down the, you know, we need to set that foundation. Part of the manual is done on the last select board, done with this select board, has laid a lot of that foundation, we gotta make sure we keep that foundation.
Maintenance.
Right, it's maintenance, it's a real cost, it's like IT.
And there's constant changes in the law, for sure. And I'm throwing this out there, I'm not trying, like, the idea based on previous thing, but, um, Myers and Harrington does have HR lawyers. That, I mean, I kind of feel like an HR firm might be a better choice, but I felt I had to throw it out there.
Well, I, I don't, I think we need an HR person. I don't, I, I, I think you can get, some of the things, if we're really doing, if we're really doing good, it's gonna be about development of people, it's gonna be about training, it's gonna be about staying ahead of the curve and not...
Not just law.
Yeah, just law, okay, so I, I feel we need an HR person that says, well, you know, they're trying this in this township, they had good results or they didn't have good results, or you want to be cautious here and things like that.
So do we, do we want to think about, I mean, I don't think these guys do retainers, how, what kind of contract do we...
I didn't read the fine print on the contracts, some of them are, are...
They're mostly about hour, hourly prices.
Yeah, I think the hourly price is gonna work to our advantage. And hopefully they proposed, and I believe they did, an hourly price that they're willing to work at, whether it's two hours and then given a week or 10 hours.
That's the question I have, is whether they'll have it, it wasn't that there was an hourly price, clearly. It's a question of, are they willing to accept variability in the number of hours? Are they expecting that this is our hourly fee and we're expecting that every month we'll bill a month's of the hour?
I don't know, we're just, you have to, you have to ask the question, you know? We may have to guarantee them four hours a month or something like that, you know, but it could be more than that. Yeah, I, I, I don't know, until, until we talk to them. Like, I didn't give it a robust one more time.
No, I, I get it, and I, I don't think that's bad, I'm just was thinking about if it's intermittent work, how do we structure that contractual, because it's a question I have, it's not an answer I have.
I don't know, where they, where I put the question to them.
Yeah, my, my thinking is hopefully would be like town council, as Frank mentioned. Where, uh, we, I think there will be a few things that we're kind of expecting on a regular basis, which I would think would be an annual, annual review and report on personnel policies, quarterly updates to the select board, and then some ongoing things, uh, like, just keeping us up to date on changes in the law or training. Yeah, I mean, maybe we'll have to fill that out, see where they can help us with. And then the rest would be on-call, just looking through the list here, and, like, on, on, on primary duties, number one, you know, regarding recruitment and developing and maintaining employee orientation, orientation packages, I thought that would be on, on an on-call basis, so...
Right.
Maybe for some position we're not, the HR director isn't helping with that, and maybe they are, but that would be on-call. I would think number two, we would get rid of, I really would think. I think that we should have a phone number and an email, so that any employee can reach the HR director at any time.
I was trying to say...
But not necessarily office hours. The maintenance of permanent records in accordance with the law, I would think would be kind of an ongoing, thing that they always need to be on the back of their mind, but isn't gonna necessarily take a lot of time.
It also might be something that the PAs pretty much do. I mean, I, I think that's, it's my understanding that that's pretty much what the ongoing thing was, that Sophia invested a lot of time in digitizing all the records, and that you've been maintaining them, and now have a system for doing it.
Advice or clarification regarding HR, legal development, et cetera. I think that would be an on-call, number four, I think that would be an on, on-call. Only if an employee or...
If there's an issue.
Department head, you know, raises an issue, then they handle it. Communicates HR policies and et cetera to town employees, advocates for employees, mediates between employees and between employees and management.
If we got an on-call person, that becomes, like, what would they be communicating with when something changes?
Well, it might be like, we have an employee handbook, and the human resources director, sends it out for everyone at a time, or does a training on a new policy. That would be what I would see communicating human resource policy, but I don't think that would really be a regular...
So would we, would we call it occasional on-call?
Well, I would just say kind of on-call, on a call basis. Organizing promotes professional development opportunities.
Do we want, I mean, we started that, that might be something we want to see, even if it's quarterly rather than... I mean, the one advantage I could see it happening would be an opportunity to actually interact with staff, so when it is an issue, there's an established relationship.
Right, I see, they're just not channeled up when there's a bar.
I, I mean, plus, it gives us the opportunity to do those, I mean, I had the impression that Sophia was setting up those roundtables to both promote the departments working better together and not being the home of the islands, as well as to have the opportunity to train people in whatever HR issues were relevant. Even if we went quarterly instead of monthly, if at least some of those purposes would be served.
Right.
If there's something to train them on, and, you know, I'm not really in a position to know.
I think here, for professional development and trainings, that could be either on a, a basis as they see fit, or we could have an expectation that there's gonna be a quarterly training, or if we, or the board or the town administrator wants to propose a training, but I... I don't know if it would be a regular expectation or kind of just, I think maybe it makes more sense to just do it as an, as, on an as-needed basis. You know, if some change in the law comes out. Seven and eight.
By the way, does that also imply you think that the monthly department head meetings should be phased out? Or do you think we should continue?
We're, we're TMA, another schedule, I asked all the staff to wait. It's not like we're gonna go quarterly.
Right, that's probably not mine.
Yeah.
And maybe, I mean, I don't know whether the HR director would be involved. Maybe it would depend on the meeting, maybe they would be involved every meeting, Melissa?
Yeah, I've asked for what kind of topics everybody wants and what kind of trainings, they really liked the one that we had when Stephen Bernstein came here, and, um, so, maybe doing those twice a year or something, and...
What, what was it, what subject was covered in that?
That was the harassment and, um, second, discrimination.
Yeah, okay, alright.
I mean, there's plenty of topics that we have, plenty of...
Yeah, right, you never run out of topic, because we need to refresh.
Yeah.
Um, I just think may, maybe the HR director's at all of them, maybe, maybe the HR director's only there if they're doing a training, I don't know. Maybe they're invited to all of them, but...
And also, maybe they, they're helpful in coming up with ideas for what would be useful, given our, I mean, they might need to get to know the town a little bit, maybe they'll be like, oh, this might really suit you. I, I mean, they might know of things we hadn't thought of, right?
Seven and eight, or, or seven regarding all municipal personnel, employee hires, et cetera. I think that would be on an on-call basis, like, we wouldn't expect them to know that we have a vacancy or we want to terminate them, but maybe they get involved, like, the Melissa reaches out and says, you know, termination, or...
Can you look at this job description?
Or, so...
Whatever, yeah.
The one thing would maybe be if they would have a regular involvement in reviewing salary. Uh, I'm not saying the needs should be negated, but that would be the only thing that I would think.
What's a reclassification? Does anybody know?
I think it's like a change of, let's go for the job. I don't know how Highway 4 became transportation and Highway 4.
Or maybe it's when they, when you're already rated...
Or exempt and not exempt, or, I feel so...
I think, isn't there also a, like, a, with a lot of bigger municipalities, they have, like, ranks in terms of their jobs? That, there's another name for it, but yeah, but it is...
Steps and stuff, pardon, step?
Steps, yeah, if you change steps, would that be a reclassification in your job? I think it might be, uh, my, I don't know that it really applies here, but it's okay.
Um, I think number eight would also be only on an on-as-needed basis. I think that's pretty clear.
Yeah, it even says that in there.
Yeah, nine is also... I mean, the only thing I could think is if they came up in an annual review and said, you know, other towns are offering this benefit, maybe Monarch should consider it too, but other than that, I would think only if we ask them about benefits. Ten, I think is, gonna be obviously on an as-needed basis. Eleven, same thing. And twelve, same thing. I think thirteen, the only question would be, do we want an annual kind of look at just all the job descriptions in conjunction with the town administrator, department heads? Maybe annual is too much.
I'd say it's fine, like, every other year, I mean, annual...
That's kind of, I mean, I don't see things changing that much.
No, well...
But I mean, by annual, I mean, you could say something comes up and you want to change it or something, you know, whatever, but I would say if I was gonna do a formal, hit the minimum by annual, that's my, you know?
So would we just kind of expect that on a, on-call as needed?
Yes, maybe.
Um, the annual review would obviously be a regular and recurring.
Right.
I think the benefits comparison would only be on an as-needed on-call basis.
I'm gonna call it bi-yearly. I think, I think it's important to have a structure where we at least periodically engage in checking around to see what's going on and what's changed, because I feel like part of what we ran into was that there was, it hadn't been done in too long. And I'd hate to, if, if we establish the idea that every couple of years we're gonna check around and make sure that our salaries are in keeping with what's happening, we won't get into that situation where there, it hasn't been done in 10 years, and there's a big... That, you know, like, it's fine that we would do it, but what happens when the board keeps changing, which happens? Like, yeah, we'd love for it not to happen, Justin, but we don't have control over that really.
Right.
I mean, I guess individually we do, but not as a group. So I think that occasionally having something in place where we're saying, yeah, this should happen every other year or every three years or whatever, pick a number. It, I think yearly is too often, but I think every five years might be too long.
Well... I think we could do by annual, maybe. Uh, the only concern with like an annual thing is it becomes...
It becomes too cumbersome.
Yeah, well, not even cumbersome, but, okay, yeah, that's all good.
Yeah, well, if you're really doing the research, making calls and funneling up, I, I, I would put by annual or as needed, because something may come up in one position.
But then, we could also do for 13 the same thing, with job descriptions, I mean, bi-yearly.
And, or as needed.
Yeah. Sixteen, administrative contracts. I think that would only be if the select board and town administrator wanted assistance.
So upon request?
Yeah, upon request.
Or on-call, I'm not really sure what the difference is here.
Yeah, we can kind of, I think...
We're asking, the difference is, we're asking for help as opposed to saying, can you please do this every other year?
Yeah, these are what's expected of you, like, what I see coming of this is a list of, these are the ongoing things. Keep us up to date on the law, um, or whatever, and then, this is, the, leaves our expectations every year, every other year, and then, these are the things that we want assistance with when we request it.
Right, exactly.
So it's clear what we're expecting. Uh, I think like seventeen would be an ongoing thing. And then, uh, seventeen, or eighteen is a lot, like, three. I think, but that would just be on...
Is it different?
Yes.
Uh, one is with regard to regulation, and the other one is just making sure they get capped?
Yeah, I think we'll combine them into one. Yeah, but that would just be a, on an as-need, an on-call slash ongoing thing, but not, we're, we're not expecting major changes. Crazy social forms. I think that would be on a call basis, right?
I, I'm gonna say that could also be one of these ones that needs to be, like, um, compliance with state personnel laws, like, it, I'm not sure that on-call means we're aware we need it. My thinking is that an HR firm might have thoughts about what we do need that we wouldn't think of.
Well, I think, hopefully, during number fourteen, annual review of the policy handbook, that would include, and maybe fourteen should be expanded to kind of all personnel policies and procedures. Uh, I know we're trying to get them all in the handbook, but if for some reason any aren't.
So maybe...
Laws, procedures, processes, whatever, um, that would kind of be, the expectation would be during the annual review. And maybe we could also say, you know, we expect an annual review, but also, on an as-needed basis, we might request.
Or we can also add, like, say that we think that nineteen should be part of fourteen. Does an annual review and recommends, uh, forms that could, could help ease internal processes?
Yeah.
I mean...
Twenty would be, yeah, twenty would kind of be on a, on-call as-needed basis. And I think what we might find is depending on who we get and however, how things are going and what we're looking for, maybe we're using them frequently for the things that we said, like, on, like, we request, and then maybe we aren't.
I think we'll have a better idea after a year of how much we're actually using the services.
Right.
Um, but that doesn't, even not having a large hourly need doesn't mean that it's a need, right?
It's a need, and two...
It just may not be that important.
It's like anything, you have legal expertise, you need to have personnel expertise.
And if you have an ongoing relationship and there is an issue, have someone who has some familiarity with your organization that can give you that aid, right? That's a desirable feature, I think. It's just a question of how much we can afford to pay for that.
Did you notice in the Gov HR proposal that temp to hire prefer to test drive the relationship and...
Yeah, I did notice that, no.
I don't, I don't know if that's what we're being proposed.
We'll probably talk about that, but that's, you know...
It, Gov Temp also says flexible work schedule. Gov Temp recognizes that all governors often do not need a controlled position on a four-hour per week basis. Accordingly, Gov Temp's employees embrace flexible work schedules.
Yeah, I did, I did notice, and I, I found it interesting, and I also found it interesting that they offered us, I, I like that they gave us more than one temp.
Right, yes, they do.
How do you have an employee leasing agreement, it's really strange to me. I, I just don't like the idea of a person being leased. I realize it's just contractual language, but it's language I don't, I'm not sure how I feel about. I feel like you can lease their services, but you can't lease them. Yes, sorry. What I don't have a good sense of is the number of hours we're talking about with that list.
I don't know.
I don't know.
I, I just think it will be, uh, it will vary, but we, based on what's going on, but I think it will vary in part based on how the experience is, so, if we use, if we use them to help interview and recruit one time and it goes really well, maybe we can do it again, and if it doesn't go well...
Well, maybe we may not need it for every position we're in.
No, whatever.
Um, oh, one other thing I thought, um, just on, what number is here, like, when employees are leaving? What are we talking, please? Um, on ten, provide information for exit employees.
Yep.
I didn't know if we should also include kind of regular exit interviews.
I think you should, I think, that would, I would use it good.
And maybe we don't have to interview every employee, but if we want them to help with that, that could be something that'd be helpful.
So are we expecting that they will tell us how many hours that is, or do we throw out a number, like...
I would say, here's what we're looking at, okay? And then, based on their experience, can you just, we have to start with a number, but let them say... But let them say, okay, you need ten hours a month, let's start with that, and then maybe we come back and look at it, are we doing?
I guess my question is, if we split, um, using ten hours a month, just to throw out there, if we're saying that, are we saying we're going to pay them for ten hours a month, or we're gonna pay them for up to ten hours a month as we use them?
I don't know, yeah.
Well, I think we should, we need to have some idea of what our expectation is.
Well, they, they have, if you, I think they have some experience, I think they need to try.
We can draw on them to say what they think.
They, they, yeah, then one guy might say, no, just be as needed, others says, well, you gotta give us ten hours, pay for ten hours a month, whether you give it or not. Then we'll have to make a decision.
I think they would have mentioned that in their proposal for services if there was a minimum. I just see in the Collins Center, it says the center builds common six-minute increments, so I just got the sense that.
Six-minute increments. Let me put you on the phone for five minutes.
Yeah, right.
I just got the sense that if we, we just get billed for every time we use and and maybe we also get to a point where we're a few months in and we realize we're going over budget and so we cut back our usage.
Well, I mean, I think the next question is what is the budget?
Well, then you cut back if you can, I don't, I wouldn't just say arbitrarily, you know.
Well, we raise money for you too.
Right.
Or we cut back some money.
Right.
The two, but we don't just go blindly into.
I agree with that.
What's our current budget, through July? Do we have a number?
It says fourteen thousand according to the notes, is that what you, was estimated in the last meeting?
It's actually higher than that.
I mean, at approximately a hundred bucks an hour for ten hours a month is a grand a month, right? So let's assume, just as a nap in Oakland Center, because it's already in November, right?
Right.
Which is about seven months, so that'd be about seven.
Right. Twenty-three thousand. I think we'll have about nineteen, it's eighteen, nineteen left after Barrington fills us for. For what?
Right. So our, our annual amount that we set aside for this year was twenty-three thousand.
Right, because we transferred fifteen.
Yeah, so you take twenty-three thousand, you're at, excuse my messy math, but you're at about three thousand one. Hello? Hello, is this Mary? Can you hear us?
No, I think she can, because she didn't change her.
Hello, Mary, can you hear us?
Hello?
Can you see?
Hi.
You can hear us, all right?
Can you hear me?
Hear you.
I can't hear you.
Um.
Hmm. We're checking our system. It's on the echo.
All right, now I can hear you.
We, we. Okay, great, great. We.
We're gonna be hit, right?
Look at the machine, change the ionosphere.
I might have muted you, you never know, so.
Well, thank, thank you for joining us today. Um, we are, uh, three members, SLI Board, and we also have our town administrator present.
Great.
Um, and we appreciate your submitting a proposal. And I think we'd just like to, you know, discuss with you a few things about your proposal and, and hear anything that you have to add. Um, do you want to start by just telling us, um, a bit about yourself and, and anything that you'd like to add to the proposal?
Sure, I'll just take a few minutes if you have time, I know you're busy. Um, so as you know, you know the Collins Center, we've done a little bit of work with the town i- in the past, but uh, you haven't worked with me, so my name's Mary Flanders-Zycardi, I lead the HR practice for the center. And we do the whole host of HR work, we do classification and compensations, we do policy reviews, organizational structure reviews, um, executive recruitment, uh, succession planning, professional development and training, anything HR we, we handle. Building those kinds of things. Uh, my background is of, been thirty-plus years in the public sector. I've been with the center, actually, it will be fourteen years tomorrow. Um, nineteen years ago, twenty, almost twenty years ago, I was able to quit my job to be home with my three kids, because I, I was pregnant with my third and I couldn't afford daycare for three kids, so. Uh, and we moved from Watertown to Shrewsbury, so I was an at-home mom for about six years. And then I started working part-time with the Collins Center. And now my youngest just went off to be a French freshman in college, so I work almost full-time with the Collins Center. Uh, the job I was able to quit was the HR director for the town of Watertown, I was there for almost nine years. I was responsible for all HR, um, not benefits, however, because that's always the question is H, uh, payroll and benefits part of finance, or is it part of HR? Uh, prior to Watertown, I was in the town of Barnstable as the assistant director. Prior to that, I was in Wellesley. Prior to that, I worked for the Mass DPW. And I'm dating myself, because it hasn't been the Mass DPW since nineteen ninety, when Governor Weld was elected. Um, and I was in the Labor Relations Department there. I currently sit on the Joint Labor Management Committee for Police and Fire as a management representative. I'm trained, I'm certified by the Mass Commission Against Discrimination on, uh, discrimination training and sexual harassment training. And, uh, through COVID, when we were a little bit slower, I went to Cornell and got a certificate in diversity, equity, and inclusion. Um, I've only worked in the public and nonprofit center. After college, uh, after my bachelor's degree, I worked at a nonprofit, uh, doing volunteer recruiting. So my whole career is, uh, my only private sector job was working at a movie theater in Framingham in high school. And the ground round is a waitress to pay for college. Uh, I went to Mass Amherst, so not too far from you, and both graduate and graduate. So that's me in a nutshell. I think the things I want to talk about with you today is, I understand that the RFP switched from having um, set hours to maybe being a, a phone a friend kind of situation, so I really want to hear from you. Um, what it is you're looking for. We have the capacity at the Collins Center to have, um, gradations of, of pay that, you know, if you had a project that needed some hands-on work, we could use one of our analysts on it supervised by me. But if it's a, you've got a family medical leave question, that you would want to call me for. Um, you know, and I'm well-versed in all the requirements of, uh, the laws these days, and they keep adding to them. So it's really tricky, so I'm happy to answer any questions or hear from you what it is the setup you actually envision.
Well, thank you for all the background, um, and, and again, thank you for your proposal. I just want to answer your, your question about the hours, the amount of hours each week. We, at this point, the board has reviewed the duties in our, uh, human resources director. What was a job description is now more of a scope of services. And we set aside a few items that we believe would be, um, regular and recurring. Like an annual review of our policies and maybe a bi-annual review of, of job descriptions. We've also set aside a few items that we believe are ongoing, like keeping us up to date with any legal changes. Um, and then we have a whole, much longer list of things that our HR director in the past year to two years has worked on sometimes. Um, and sometimes the town administrator or the SLI Board have handled. Um, so we kind of set these aside as on a, as necessary or on-call basis. Um, we've only had an HR director for one, uh, one year, a little bit over one year. Um, and even during that year, what, what she helped us with kind of fluctuated as time went on. Um, and we were working on some bigger, uh, projects, um, like reviewing the whole employee manual. So I think the sense of the board at this time is we would hope for kind of a commitment to some of those uh, regular and recurring projects and those ongoing things of keeping us up to speed. Um, but then, you know, have a, a list of things that we recognize and you recognize. Um, you know, we might ask you to do, um, but we'll just have to feel it out, like what works for you, what works for us um, going forward. I'm not sure how you feel about that kind of a setup, um, but I'm curious if you'd be willing to work with us like that.
It, it's funny, one of the projects I did was working with, um, I've done two projects on this. One with, uh, uh, the Franklin Regional Council of Governments and the other with the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission of municipalities coming together, trying to address this issue by either having shared HR services. Um, they've tried it with shared between two towns, you know. Um, the small-town concern is we don't have enough work to, you know, justify benefits and pay. And, you know, and the theory of somebody sitting around, I'm not sure that ever really happens in small towns. But, um, the, the concern was, you know, we don't want to overpay, we're willing to pay for what we need. Um, and so really, the, the recommendations that came out of, even more recently out of the Pioneer Valley project was the phone a friend kind of thing that I mentioned, because, you know, I think having somebody you can call to say, what do you need? Certainly, the Collins Center has plenty of work, but we also have plenty of depth in our, in our practice areas, so that it is, um, it, it's probably for you a practical approach. You know, try it for a year, see what you actually use it for and, um, and, and measure that, because you may find it's more cost-effective to have one of my, my, not mine, the center's staff people. You know, I don't know where you are in your policies, I'm actually going to Coal Rain tomorrow, uh, because we did their policies for them. And steal from them if you'd like, feel free, it's all public information. Um, we can have somebody do that, and your staff people don't have the time to work on that kind of project. You know, it can be very cumbersome. So I think if you go project by project, but then also that resource of having somebody, you know, who can probably answer most of your HR calls pretty quickly. That doesn't mean you don't have staff that can't research it, but that's a lot of staff time, when in fact, if it's fifteen minutes, uh, you know, with me on the phone, if I know the answer, I know the answer, and you've only expended that amount of, of, of money on that. So there's time and efficiency in that. Um, you know, we don't, we're in the business of covering our costs, we're not out there to say, you've got to guarantee us twenty hours a week. It could be one hour one week, three hours on a call dealing with an employee issue the next week. No hours for a number of weeks, so, you know, um, by having a firm, you're not committed to, oh, here's the retainer. You know, you draw down from that. We can do it on a billable hourly rate, and you did see in the, in the proposal, these rates include all of our overhead. Um, I do not earn what my rate says it is, uh, you know, so that, you know, like everything, uh, I, my husband would wish that, you know. Um, my actual pay is all public information. I, I do get paid a hundred dollars an hour, but the bill is more because of all the overhead. We don't charge you travel if I had to come out, you know, so that sort of thing. So, um, it's all a blended rate and that's the cost of us doing business. Uh, but there's no hidden fees or anything, and I would suspect much of the work, unless I was coming to do some training or something, can be by phone or Zoom, uh, you know, so.
Um, I have a weird question, but one of the things that I raised this morning when we were, I'm Susan Cooper, by the way. When we were, hi, uh, talking about what we thought our needs might be, was the idea of sort of, uh, I think Frank phrased it as strategic thinking regarding personnel development. Um, and we are, the HR director that was shared that just went to be Barrington's full-time person, um.
Oh, is that what happened? That's funny.
Yeah. Speaking with Sharon. Um, instituted, uh, round tables in which, but with department heads in which there were some trainings. I'd be curious to hear a little about what kind of trainings, if, um, I know it's off the top of your head, but maybe you've done some in the last couple of years that come to mind. What kind of trainings do you think a small town could benefit from to improve their, um, well, to just do personnel development?
Sure, um, we do an awful lot of training, right now we're in, we have a, kind of a set model, a, a, a six-module training session for supervisors, uh, that includes, you know, know your personality type, communications, which is key. I would start with communications, um, because with Zoom calls and, you know, communication is always tricky. We do respectful workplace and what are the manager's expectations of staff? How do you handle that? Uh, the next one is, how do you manage yourself, your work, delegation? Then it's, um, performance management of staff, and then it's discipline. So that's the six sessions, and we actually, um, work closely with the MMA every year, twice a year, they do, it's called SLDP in the MMA, uh, Personnel or HR Association these days. We just finished it up in Palmer, we were there for, for six sessions in Palmer. So we also do that as individual sessions, or we can customize. Many small towns don't do the full and they just have us do periodic workshops. What I would want to do initially, is really build in some time. You know, and this is probably one where I would say, you know, let me come out a- and meet people, you know, and say, what do you need? You got to ask people, what do they want, what do they need? Everybody needs supervise, any department head you have, whether they supervise people or not, you know, your key people. We really should do some sort of baseline, um, training with them. And a fun one to start with is in fact, you know, uh, know your type, which is our MBTI, um, sort of thing. You know, what type of person, what's type of manager are you, how do you deal with other people because of that? And that's just a fun way to get people going, but I wouldn't want to presume what they need, but those are some of the things we see they need. You know, what are your responsibilities as managers? Um, our public discord is getting challenging and, uh, it's helpful to have a shared language and understanding of how, what are our roles and how do we operate within this, you know, municipal world? So that's where I would start with that. Also making sure if you have policies, training on those policies, so everybody is understanding them from the same lens and what are the expectations? What I'd want to start with, and while I know I have coworkers who have worked there, um, and I'm sure it might be someplace in our shared folder, which I am not that great at, this whole sharing live documents, um, is the org chart, what staffing you have, who's got what responsibility, do you have job descriptions, what do they look like? That sort of thing, I think that I would want to find out the foundational things. And then really, you know, do a kickoff at the beginning. Um, I think as I said in one of my emails, the hours at the beginning of something like this are more and then it's kind of the ad needed, but, you know, we don't bill anything or do any work that isn't under, you know, the town's authority, so. Um, I think this would be a good model, whether it's us or somebody else you're talking to, I think this is the way to start and see how it goes. You had the model, my guess is you had a split number of hours with Great Barrington and you, and, you know, there were ebbs and flows to that. It's hard to work.
There are five towns.
Oh, no wonder. Uh, well, and that, how do you split a person five ways? Because, you know, on a day you're having a crisis and another town's having a crisis, you know, um, that's hard, that's hard.
You have a sixth one, yes. Um, I think I was just gonna say the thing about five. I think that answered a lot of my question and it's reassuring to know that you're familiar with the challenges that small towns face when it comes to human resources.
I do. I've done a lot of work in the area, so New Marlboro, we did all their policies, I'm training, I, we did coal rains where we do a lot of work out in the area, you know, I've done work in, but, um, what we're doing, let me see. Buckland, you know, so we're, we're up in the area a lot, did all the policies for Irving is much bigger than you. They're huge compared to you, you know, but we do totally understand it. I love the Hill towns, Worthington, a lot of work there, we did all of their HR work. So we, we get it, I, I live in Shrewsbury, so in terms of, you know, driving time, it's really not that bad. I don't have to go through the city if I ever do have to come out and it's a beautiful drive, so.
As far as when I'll say situations do arise, the phone a friend, I suppose, would also include the possibility of, I guess, mediation or coping with a, let's say there's a harassment complaint made or some other really problematic event. Would that be the sort of thing that someone from Collins, either you or somebody else would be able to help us navigate?
It would really depend on what the underlying issue is. What we don't want to do, we have a fabulous coworker who just retired from Humass Amherst, she lives in Amherst and her whole background has been coaching, mediation, that sort of thing. So if it's appropriate, yes. If it is a legal issue, no, we would advise you to say, don't go down this road. And that's what's valuable about having us is because you don't need to call a lawyer for most things. But if you have something that could end up that way, we would discuss it with you before saying, oh yeah, we can do that, you know. So I think that really would depend and quite frankly, the difference in rate between, I don't know what lawyer situation you have, whether you have a firm or a local, the difference in rate is not worth getting it wrong. You know, so we, we would want you to, you know, and sometimes it's a, like we've done this with other clients, it's a conversation with us and the lawyer to say, who's doing which part of it and what makes the most sense? Like we just recently did a whole Fair Labor Standards Act wage issue. We consulted with the municipality's lawyer, we had our analysts do the work and report it through the lawyer. You know, we don't want to represent you as, we're the consultant, not your lawyer.
No, I think she's, I think she's, Mary's covered everything.
That's great because I have to go to a 10 o'clock orientation on a classification and compensation. So why don't I just wait to hear from you, I'll let you, you talk and you reach out to me if you have any other questions.
Thanks very much.
All right, good to see you, be well, take care.
Hello, Mike, can you hear us? Hello? We can see you, but.
It's frozen though, which may mean that we're, we're getting a little image. So they were, we're also, Rachel at the same time, I'm assuming? Okay, Rachel is the actual person.
Hi, Mike, we can see you, but we're not sure if you can hear us.
And we can't hear you, I'm guessing you can't hear us since you're not reacting.
He's probably saying it's five at 10, he's down for 10, so he might just.
I might be trying to get Rachel. Succession planning, that might be something else we want to put on there. I mean, we don't have enough people to always have a person that can step up, but it's something to think about. Because we, you know, it's come up and I love the fact that they had a phrase for it. I don't, I mean, there should be one, but it didn't occur to me previously. No succession planning, the phrase succession planning, right? Because we were talking about it since I came on the board that it, you know, it was just my accident. I was very aware of somebody being sidelined due to unexpected circumstance, let's say.
Hi, Mike, can you hear us? We can see you, but.
We can't hear you. Can you see us? Can you hear us? I'm guessing that's no.
It's weird because if the same thing happened to Mary before, but then. Well, I know a lot of people, or it's not definitely, we could.
Sorry, I can't hear you.
Ah, we can hear you now for the first time. But he can hear us, I'm not even going back there to touch anything.
Give us one minute. We lost our technical support.
I know.
Afraid to touch anything, but I just can't.
She must have run into the ladies because she's not in the office.
She's been a year.
I was talking about the weather over the weekend, I was in DC.
Was it nice?
67, 68 degrees, not a cloud, must go. Walked 36 holes of golf.
I heard they had a lot of rain this summer.
Yeah, they had, they had a very less.
He can't hear us.
We could, he spoke and we could hear him, but you can't hear us. That's two for two. What did you wave over last time this was all I did last time? Can you hear us now?
I can, yes.
Yeah.
I'm worried about that.
The tag wizard doesn't show why that even worked.
Yeah, this is, this time for me on GoTo, so, yeah, it's all new.
It, it, it might be on our end because we had the same thing happen half an hour ago, so.
Okay.
Glad we can hear you.
Is Rachel joining us?
Yeah, she should be jumping in soon.
Okay.
Yeah, let me just make sure she's in.
Hello?
Hello.
Ah, we can hear you, can you hear us?
Yeah, yes, I can hear you now, hold on just a moment, let me see, I thought my camera was already on. This is my first time using GoTo, so.
We've heard that before.
Is this your first, is this your first time too, Mike?
Yes, it is, yeah.
So, so thank you both for joining us this morning. I think we'll, we'll quickly introduce ourselves so that you know who we are and then hopefully you can introduce yourselves and we can discuss the, the proposal. So I'll start, I'm, I'm Justin Maycock and I'm on the select board and I'm the chair.
Frank Abbott.
And Susan Cooper.
And the town administrator.
Sorry, I didn't get that middle name, so I got Justin, Susan, and I'm sorry, there's one name I missed.
Frank.
Frank, okay, good morning. Good morning.
And Melissa, who's the town administrator.
Hi, Melissa. I just can't see you, but hello.
Well, thank, thank you for joining us and thank you for the proposal. Do you want to start by introducing yourselves and discussing the proposal? And then I think we have a few questions for you as well.
Sure, why don't I start? My name is Mike Earl, I'm a senior VP with GovHR GovTemp's and we are a, a national firm with, with a, a strong presence in the Northeast, specifically in, in Massachusetts. So when we received the, the notice from, from Melissa, I spoke to Rachel and asked if she might be interested and for sure she is. And I like Rachel's candidacy because she has, she is, lives in, in Massachusetts and has done some work and quite a bit of work in, in the state and I think would be well qualified for what you're seeking. We are Gov. We do quite a bit of executive recruitments and placements and organizational studies across the country. And on the GovTemp side, we do interim placements across the country. Now, we've been in 20 plus states, we're based out of Northbrook, Illinois, which is a suburb of Chicago. So we're, we're happy to present Rachel and I'll ask Rachel if she wants to just introduce herself and then entertain any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mike. Good morning, everyone. So I'm Rachel Glissler and I've been with GovHR now, gosh, I think it's going on almost two years. And I work with them as a VP or a consultant. I work on a variety of things with GovHR, so because of my HR background, I can work on the HR assessments that are done with the different municipalities that we work with nationwide. I also work on recruitments and then I also do some DEI work as well. So I have, as Mike mentioned, I've worked in both state and municipal government in Massachusetts. So, and it's all been HR, human resources. So I started with the Massachusetts parole board and I worked there for a bit. I also worked with the Middlesex Sheriff's Office, the Executive Office of Health and Human Services, and then lastly with the Town of Needham, where I was the HR director there for a little over five years. So I started out in HR, I've got 20, 20 plus years of experience in HR. That's a mix of both private and public sector. So I've, I've got a feel for what it's like on the private sector as well. Although most of my most recent experiences has been public and I do enjoy the public sector and I feel comfortable here and I kind of see myself continuing with this work in, in public administration. So that's it about me, I'm also doing some work on the side. I do some DEI consulting as well as HR consulting and some coaching, executive leadership coaching as well. So I'll turn it back over to you.
Well, thank, thank you for introducing yourself and giving that, that context. I think the first question that I have for you is the select board, you know, discussed earlier this morning and over the past few weeks, what we're looking for as far as help with human resources. And we've come to the conclusion that there's a few items that are regular and recurring, such as an annual review of the, of all of the town's policies and procedures, as well as hopefully quarterly meetings with the board to, to update, give us any strategic goals or policies to keep us up to date and, and compliant, as well as, you know, to constantly improve our personnel policies and, and our personnel. And beyond that, we have a lot of items that we might need help with kind of on an as-needed basis, like recruitment. But we're not sure if that would be a regular thing, both because we don't constantly have positions open and some positions might be easier to fill than others. But, so those kinds of things, we have a, a list of them that might be, you know, we need more hours this week and this week we don't really need any hours on those items or a complaint comes up that we're hoping the HR director can handle, but next week there is none. So to what degree would you be willing to kind of work with a fluctuating schedule for the town? Is that something that could work for you or are you looking for a, a set number of hours each week?
The fluctuating schedule is fine with me, that actually works with other projects that I have going. So as long as there's an understanding and I have a sense of, if there is something coming down the pike, if I'm understanding your question, if there are some bigger things coming down the pike, for example, if there are some recruitments or if there's a job ad that's going out that you will be recruiting for, so I have a sense of, okay, there's, there might be some more hours required at this point because now we have an active job in play. As far as town policies that you mentioned, do, do you have policies that need revision right now immediately? Or do you need somebody to look at your policies and get a sense of what needs to be updated?
So we've actually undergone a process over the past year or so of reviewing our employee handbook. We haven't quite crossed the finish line, but we're pretty close. Just for a little bit of background on Monterey, which you may find helpful, we forever operate without a, a human resources director and, and the select board and the administrative assistant and then town administrator, you know, have work to handle the traditional functions of, of human resources. We first got a human resources director just over a year ago, who was shared between five towns, with, with each town having a allotted number of hours. That human resources director left to get a full-time job with one of the five towns. So that's why we're looking for a human resources director. And she had helped us during her year here review our employee handbook and review our policies and we got many of them updated. And like I said, we're kind of very close to having a, a new and improved employee handbook. So I'm not sure how much work there really is with that. But as far as the annual review, I think what the board was proposing was, you know, each year at some point during the year, the HR director might review our employee handbook and any other policies that we have to make sure that they're compliant with the law. And maybe if, if situations have come up throughout the year, that depending on how they went, we might realize that there's a need to change a policy. So that's, I think, what I was getting at with annual review. It would just kind of be maintenance and upkeep, not, not creating an entirely new employee handbook.
Thank you.
So one of the things that we, that the HR director also put into play was monthly or bimonthly meetings of the department heads, sort of a roundtable situation, in, including partly to get the departments, like we're a small town, but people were kind of very much operating as individual islands to try to bring a little more unity to that sense of we're all working for the town. But also to enable some types of training, we had, I want to call it a harassment training, but I think it had a longer, more inclusive title there that I thought went pretty well, were there other trainings?
Yeah, it was the anti-discrimination and harassment and then we did emotional intelligence.
So we've had an emotional intelligence and an anti-discrimination. So, and we've had an emotional intelligence and an anti-discrimination and harassment trainings, for example. Um, and one of the things we mentioned would be some strategic thinking about other trainings we could offer to just continue to do, I'll call it personnel development on a regular basis. Um, what sort of other trainings do you think? I mean, obviously you don't know much about us, so you can't tailor those suggestions to us right this moment. But off the top of your head, what kinds of trainings have you done that you think small towns might benefit from if they haven't already done or if they need updated?
Well, you've had a couple of good ones, it sounds, um, that you've already implemented. Like you said, I don't know your community, so probably the first thing I would start out with, I, I really appreciate the idea of the, um, those meetings that the previous director established. That's such a great way to keep your finger on the pulse of the needs. And so that is how I would learn about the needs, um, and what folks needed to hear more about. Um, and then make some decisions around what I'm hearing. Uh, based on those needs, off the top, um, maybe some bias training, um, would be helpful to fold in, just, it would go in line with, with what, what you've done already. I've done bias training, I've done age discrimination, um, LGBTQ plus, um, trainings. So all those things, I, I'm comfortable in that arena and training groups of, of people. Um, so it could be along those lines. But from a, from a personnel, kind of HR standpoint, um, as well, just making sure, um, any sexual harassment trainings, where we are on that schedule, when those need to be done, um, anything that needs to be signed off there, um, to show that we've completed that and met that obligation. Um, anything around, you know, um, any new rollout of benefits, anything that's happening in the town that folks need to be updated and aware of. Um, even if we make changes to policy, uh, any policy updates or changes, sometimes it's nice to have, um, training so that people understand what's out there now. This, this is the policy. Answer questions. Do you understand this? Is this clear? Um, and so that folks really get a good sense of, of what they're working within now. Um, so any, any changes or updates to policy, if you haven't had meetings on that, uh, the rollout of the handbook, because it's not really completed yet, that might be a nice opportunity for a training.
Can I add too, that's, um, to, to add on to what Rachel, um, just, just mentioned? Can you hear me? Okay, I'm just getting a little feedback.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
We can hear you, Mike.
Okay, good. Yeah, the, the company Gov HR, we offer, um, um, training, um, supervisory leadership training, for example, uh, performance review, um, uh, is, is another one that comes to mind. So, anything that, uh, is needed in the way of, uh, training at the HR side, um, you know, that's, that's what we do. And, um, you know, if Rachel, um, hasn't done it, uh, it herself, you know, we can always bring folks on from the company who can, uh, who can, um, present those trainings.
I have a question. Uh, current, current HR director, you know, had an email and the employees could call them directly. Can we have that same setup under you? If employee, instead of coming to the select board or the town administrator had a concern, could there be some direct line email address that could be out there for them to call, call you or email you?
Absolutely, Frank. Uh, so that would be something that I would want to maintain. So if that's already been established, if there's an email address or a line that's already been established, that would just be a continuation. That would be maintenance of what's already out there so that folks know that that's just a continued service. Um, and that should be something that every HR department has, in my opinion, um, where they know where to go and who to talk to, um, should things come up.
Another thing that we discussed earlier was that, um, uh, the town's gone through a lot of changes over the last few years. And one of the things that Frank's fairly new to the board, but one of the things that we really have had to tackle in the last year and a half since I've been on the board was, um, really looking at a lot of the compensation packages and benefits that were offered to make sure that the salaries we're offering were competitive. Because I'm sure you're very aware of how much stuff has changed on that front in the last five years. Um, one of the things we discussed was that we might, it, I think we're in good shape now, but we don't want it to go back to the situation where it, it kind of was left for so long because it results in a lot of change, which is hard on a municipality. Um, would that be, would doing sort of compensation comparisons with other small communities, maybe biennially be something that you're familiar with or would recommend or be willing to do?
It's something that I could certainly work on, uh, Susan. I couldn't work for a better company when it comes to comp and class. Uh, that's what Gov HR does, um, and, and they do so, so very well. I hired, uh, Gov HR as the HR director in Needham to do our comp and class study, our town-wide comp and class study. So it's, it's something that I'm familiar with some of the process and, and how that works. But, uh, being associated and affiliated with Gov HR, um, that's a wonderful mix so that if you are interested in that, um, I can tap into the many resources available there and, uh, my colleagues to, um, ensure that you get what you need by way of your, um, comp comparisons with other, you know, similar communities, et cetera.
Thanks.
Um, Mike, just to speak to the structure of, of Gov HR, um, and, and the proposal, uh, would, and also to Rachel, I mean, if we, you know, were to move forward with Gov HR and Rachel as, as the town HR director, would it be just a, would be, would be, would we be working solely with Rachel? Or is it the kind of thing where it depends on the project? Like Rachel, would you outsource certain, um, parts of the job to other people within Gov HR? Or would we work exclusively, uh, with yourself?
Yeah, thanks. I'd be your point of contact for administrative matters. Um, you know, the billing and, uh, you know, the term of the agreement, um, the time sheets, uh, et cetera. Uh, but Rachel, she'll, she'll be like, she's, uh, she'll function as though she were an employee, you know, of, of, of the town. So she'd be your, your point of contact and, um, uh, for, for the everyday. And if, um, you know, if issues came up where you needed some, you know, a, a more formal classification and compensation plan, or you needed some specific training in areas that, uh, um, that Rachel perhaps isn't as, uh, um, um, familiar with, uh, we can help there. And, you know, the other thing that I think is, um, is super important these days is, um, is, is recruitment. You know, we're, uh, we're heavy into recruitment. I mean, we do over, um, well over two hundred professional recruitments, uh, a year. And we're, um, we're nationwide. So, um, we have a, a very active, um, uh, jobs board. Um, Rachel is very well-networked in Massachusetts. Um, we're all networked in Massachusetts. So, um, um, if, if you need help, and everyone does with filling positions, you know, I think Rachel, uh, will know how to best attract candidates.
Thank you. I think that, that, that answered my, my question. Thank you. I think, I think that you've answered all of our questions and thank you for submitting a proposal and thank you for joining us today and we appreciate your time. And we'll get back to you, um, in, in the next couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
If there's anything you need from the board.
We can only talk with each other at select board meetings and those only happen once a week. So things take longer than you might like.
Okay, I understand.
The open meeting law, it's a major detriment to actually getting stuff done.
Completely understand. Um, is there any room? I had a couple of quick questions. Is there any room for that now or?
Yeah, please. Sorry, I didn't, I, sorry, I didn't.
You should have asked.
Yeah, I ju- I had a couple of quick questions prepared, um, because I believe it was Melissa who had sent kind of an outline, just a rough outline of what some of the needs were, um, in Monterey. Um, and so I had a sense, and so as I was preparing, um, I, I had a question about, does Monterey work with, um, legal counsel on personnel matters at all? Do you have legal counsel that you work with regularly?
We do. Um, we work with a firm called Myers and Harrington. And typically, when, you know, a, a personnel matter arises, if it, you know, if it can be dealt with by the department head and/or the town administrator, it's usually handled there, but it might come to the select board or the human resources director. Um, and then if anyone thinks that town council's opinion should be, uh, sought, then, then we, then we work with town council. So on some occasions, we've worked with, you know, the human resources director and town council, um, just to get everyone on board, make sure things are, are legal and also, you know, best practice. Um, so we do, we do have a town council that we work with.
Okay, thank you. Just one of the bullets had mentioned that kind of consulting with the town administrator and the department heads on various things like human resources, personnel and legal. And although, you know, I'm an HR professional, I'm not an attorney. Um, and I've worked with many, um, and, you know, I have a, a, an understanding of legal process in the HR world. But when necessary, I just wanted to make sure that that's a resource that would be available, um, to be able to, uh, confer with counsel. Um, also, um, you, one of the bullets also mentioned, um, that, that at the town's discretion, maybe, um, be a representative, this role would be a representative kind of at town meetings and maybe as part of grievances or arbitrations and things, um, any MCAD discrimination cases that might be going on. Um, are there any active or pending issues that, um, the, the new HR person would walk in and have to get busy with?
Um, not that we're aware of.
I would hope we would be aware of it and we're not, so.
No news is good news.
Right, if you all do know, then right, then there's none. So I'll take that.
I don't think we've ever had our human resources director, you know, represent us in front of MCAD or something like that. Um, but, you know, it'd be, oh, we'd be open to seeking that. Just so you know, we cut, we went ahead as soon as we found out, or maybe not as soon as, but shortly after we found out that our HR director was taking a full-time job in one of the towns and leaving us and, and forwarded out kind of a draft job description. So we're still working on it and getting it squared away for kind of what we expect moving forward. But we did send that out, uh, because we just wanted to get proposals and, and get to interviews and, and keep things moving along. So, um, that list, we're still, we're still working on finalizing.
Okay, all right, good to know. And one, just quick last question, just about the time, because you said it would fluctuate. Is there a minimum amount of hours that you would expect this person to be available to Monterey per week? And what is the in-person to remote ratio?
We don't necessarily have a, a minimum or a maximum, but if that's something that you felt like you needed or wanted, we could discuss that. Um, we, I mean, I think my sense is, not to speak for the whole board, but it's that, you know, a few hours a week will probably be pretty normal. Very occasionally, there may be no hours that we need. Um, maybe in those weeks, the longer-term projects or the annual reviews could be worked on. Um, and then, you know, we had said, I think, eight hours. I see eight hours as probably very much a maximum. And a- as far as remote in-person, um, I think the expectation is that a lot of the work is gonna be done remotely, unless there's a training or an important meeting, or maybe you recommend that you think it, it needs to be in-person. But I think, I think the sense is that most of the work was going to be remote.
This is very much a work in progress. So I, um, we basically, our first HR person was this shared person. Um, and we feel like it worked in a lot of ways, but we are really small. We don't have a ton of ongoing need. But we do wanna have a person that we can reach out to, to help when we need it and to make sure that the things we put in place that are working continue to be updated regularly so they don't fall behind again. Um, the reality is, we don't actually know what that work burden is. Um, so it's new territory for us, which is why we can't really put a number to it.
No, that, that's good. Actually, yeah, I saw the eight too. So that was helpful to hear, that eight a week would probably be like considered the max. And it could be some weeks where there's just zero, uh, because there might not be anything going on. So that's, that's good to have a sense of that. And it sounds like mostly remote. And, um, in terms of how long you see this assignment going, are you in, are you trying to find another shared HR director? Are you trying to find your own HR director on a part-time basis? Do you see this assignment, um, lasting for an extended period of time?
My sense is that if we form a good working relationship with a consultant like Gov HR, we would probably continue that relationship going forward.
Definitely.
We're not looking at another shared HR director at the, at the moment. And, uh, I think, and we're not necessarily look, we are not advertising for an employee either, so.
Thank you. That's all I had. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Appreciate you reaching out to us and I, I really like the approach that you're taking. And it, and it works, uh, fits in well to what we do as a company. We would be happy to, uh, to work with you going forward. So thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
Thanks for your time.
You too. Bye-bye.
Thoughts? You wanna percolate on it or?
No, I, I mean, I think both of them, you know, they answered the questions right. You know, there's comfort factor. I think the two individuals are both well qualified. Mary had recommended, or said she's done work with, or that group, Collins had done work with us before. She said that, mm-hmm.
Yeah, they, I think they did some reviews of various things in the town. Is that big correct?
Yeah, they did.
Yeah, okay.
In twenty nineteen or twenty twenty. But not Mary herself.
No, not, yeah, well, she said that, but she, or Sasha.
I, I, I appreciated the sort of list of trainings and perspectives that, um, Mary offered. I feel like, 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 I think H, Gov HR might have a broader perspective, but Rachel seems a lot more focused just on the DEI aspects of things. Um, which is okay, but I just don't need, I, having just done any discrimination harassment training and I feel like I'd like to see us do more of the sort of leadership and management kind of stuff.
I would agree with, I, I mean, we need both, but, uh, we, we don't part and.
We just did that and let's do those other things we haven't done. Because I think that developing your, your supervisors is, it's always a good thing.
To me, Rachel seems qualified, um, for the position and she has that experience from Needham. I believe that's right, Needham. Mary, Mary seems like she has a very good sense of the area and the needs of the town and was really wo- willing to work with us and, and figure out exactly what we need. She, I noticed that, so Coal Rain is a town, I think about, of, of under two thousand, according to the, the internet search. Um, north, just east of Berkshire County and, but on the northern border of Massachusetts. Um, Watertown, Braintree, Barnstable, towns where she has done a lot of work, are larger than Monterey. Um, but, um, F First, COG, Franklin Regional County Council of Governments is actually an organization that we work with, right?
Haven't Mary said she did something for New Marlboro?
She did a salary survey for them. Just putting that out there as well. They do a salary survey, I think, every year and keep that.
Collins Center.
Yeah, the Collins Center.
I think Collins Center seems really well-suited to our situation.
I, I mean, I feel like they have a, their fingers on the pulse of. I mean, I feel like they have their fingers on the pulse of a lot of things in a way. I felt pretty comfortable that they would also be good at helping us figure out what that longer-term need was after looking at how we use stuff for you.
One other thought was that she, I don't know, she just clearly knew what's going on in our town, and it seemed like a really good, it seemed like a really good fit. That's how I felt, too. I'm trying to think of. Oh, what, actually, I remember what my one thought was. Was, as far as financials are concerned, I don't, I, I'm, I'm not. I think that Collins Center has the higher rate for the senior. I don't have the proposal rate, well, I do have a rate for me there. Has the highest rate for the Human Resource Practice Leader. But it did seem like there was a willingness, and she was recommending that a lot of the work would be done by a management analyst. So, that was comforting to know that, you know, we could probably still work within our budget more so, rather than, you know, have to make a decision based solely on that. Because I know that was something we discussed last weekend. It is a valid concern. You don't have a lot of hours at 160 now. But it would afford us more hours.
If we're not paying that top rate every time.
Yeah. I mean, I want to, I want to get what's right and pay for it as we need to. But I know it is about, it is a real concern as well, being financially responsible.
What, you got any thoughts?
I agree, because I think the Collins Center knows the area better and the needs of our towns, and are more familiar.
I had a higher comfort level with her sort of command of what was likely to be needed.
I was thinking prior to meeting that we might have a discussion next week, but.
The only thing I think that.
Sit on it for a week.
The only thing that I feel like I'd like to see us do would be to go ahead. I feel like put, somehow using our conversation from earlier about the on-calls and the.
Yeah, as needed, on-call.
As needed, putting that into, like, modifying this document to reflect what we're actually thinking we're going to want from this person, so that we have written, you know, like a written thing to start with. If nothing else, it would allow us to then look a year from now or, you know, within the next budgetary year or whatever, back and say, okay, what did we actually use? What does the budgeting for this look like? All those kinds of questions. It would give us something to look back on and compare our work experience with our expectation.
I think I have kind of a picture in my mind about how to reorganize this and come back to it. And I think that it shouldn't just be something to look back on. I think that we can use it, and that way the expectations are clear, even if it's not a job description for an employee, but a scope of services for a contractor.
That's a good way to phrase it.
I just wanted to check the proposal, yeah, because the Collins Center proposal was the short one. It's simply the. No, I don't know if we need to have a proposal we need to accept still based on this.
I mean, I think that it would sort of task one, the initial meeting, to refine the scope of the work. I think that that document is a working document would be a good way to initiate under task one. Because there, we need to be a little bit clearer so they have some sense of what to expect. And if there are things we want in that first period, like, it might be something to say if we're going forward, this would be, this particular task is the one that we'd like to see you embark on with your, you know, getting to know the community, I don't know, being at that roundtable and coming up with a plan for forward trainings in the upcoming year.
Right, strategic.
Yeah. And they've all said, like, the way to do it would be to get to know what the need is, which is 100%. But we need a way for that to happen, and that might be a good, I'll call it, first project.
Frank, do you have further thoughts about?
My opinion is, I don't think you'd lose with either one. But I think that the Collins Group is more Massachusetts-centered. You know, the GOV might have some kind, because it's a big organization across this line and stuff. I think the fact that, you know, with the Collins Group and you want an analyst to do work, an analyst do it, you're paying them on a reasonable scale. And I think Mary, I think she knows, I don't know if she knows more, but the comfort level in the small townships is there. I mean, it's not that, I don't think Rachel's, she's not qualified. But I think, you know, that I would give Mary the edge.
Yeah, all right, well, maybe we'll go forward with that next week. Got to figure out whether we should be appointing the.
Not even really appoint.
Well, you got to.
Hiring.
Yeah, so this is kind of becoming messy between appointing and hiring and a consultant. Maybe I'll just run it by Donna quickly and say, do we, you know, if we appoint.
Why do we have to appoint?
We then.
Why can't we?
Hiring consultants for services.
Why can't we, what did you do when you hired the law firm?
We.
You do appoint town council, because the problem is, town council is in mass general law, and I think there's certain things that, maybe you don't need to appoint a town council, but like, okay, so we point a town treasurer. Why do we appoint a town treasurer instead of just signing a contract with Sarah Hunter and that's moot? Because then you can only be represented at Berkshire County Retirement Meetings by an appointed treasurer. And your appointed treasurer has to do certain things under mass general law. So, that's why we do appointments. And whenever we've discussed it before, we've erred on the side of just basically appointing everyone, even if we don't need to, because maybe there's a reason they need to be appointed instead of hired.
Reason will come up.
Yeah, so that's why it's kind of clumsy and unfortunate. But I don't think that we need to appoint a human resources director because we didn't have one for 200 years or whatever.
Four years, wasn't it?
Not 200 years. Well, we were clearing the end before we were in Monterey.
We've only recently had.
Anyway, I'll just check, but, yeah, I think basically hire the firm. However, I think it would be good to be very clear that this is our human resources director, not just some kind of consultant. To the extent that we tell our employees, when you have this kind of a complaint, go to the human resources director.
So, are you willing to take on organizing that as a scope service?
Yeah, and I'm not planning to finalize it next week, per se, but.
I think it wouldn't be a bad thing to try to do, because then we could take that scope of service and reach out and say, we'd like to contract with you for services. And here's the scope of services, a start. It doesn't mean it's a, it can be a working document, but at least it gives us a foundation. And I don't see a reason to put off making that call, since we all seem to have a, we're, you know, seem like we're all on the same page, which candidate we prefer.
Yeah, I just want to make sure if we need to appoint or hire or whatever motion and posting needs to be, that we do it.
But my point being, if you reach out to council and make it, you know, modify that with your idea, then we can make that call next week and job done.
Yeah, I think so. I think it's a good fit. I think it's a very natural good fit.
I'm really relieved that we found a good fit. I, like, I didn't have that positive expectation, and I'm very glad to have found one. And to feel like there might not have been a bad choice is even better.
Right, right.
Should I just reach out to everyone to know that we're interested in pursuing something for others?
Or, do they, what I would suggest, and I haven't looked at it. Do they have like a contract? So that you could start running by Donna.
Well, what they did give is this proposal for consulting services and rates. So, we might be able to just go on that and accept that proposal rather than have a contract. Maybe we want a contract, but maybe we don't.
Yeah, so, number one, ask Donna if we can hire or we have to appoint.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the details.
Do we want her to just vet that to make sure she's okay with it?
Yeah.
And three, we need to refine the scope of services. But I do think reaching out to them and saying that we were impressed with them and would like to pursue negotiating for their services, we want to finalize this scope of work, and we'll be back to them by next week would be polite.
Yeah.
We might want to also say to GovR, we really appreciate, formally in letter, we really appreciate their time and thank them for meeting with us. At this time, we've made the decision to go with someone else. But should we need help in the future, we would certainly consider their services or something.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. That's good.
I mean, I just think it's always good to leave that door open, because you don't know what will happen.
Yep. All right, so I will work on reorganizing the scope services. Melissa will reach out to them.
I can reorganize this, too, if you want. I was thinking of doing it in the, you know, on-call stuff, like an on-call site.
Yeah, as needed, on-call stuff like that.
Well, if you, if you want, if you want to work on it with me, either you do it and then run by me or vice versa. Because I also had a few bullets that I felt like could be modified or combined or separated out or deleted for repetitive.
Let me take a stab, and I'll send that to you.
Okay.
Go team.
Yeah, and then we'll run that proposal by and see if we can just simply turn it off on that and the exact process or point higher, but we'll do that next week. The Bear Town Mountain Road Project. The low bidder was Raifenberg. With the base bid being $792,142.
The variability in the bids, did you look at the bid sheet below?
Did you look at the detail? Because aggregated the material is this huge sway.
Oh, my God, the difference between.
Rule her out there and make sure we get 12 inches of gravel or whatever.
Well, so the difference was Raifenberg is using Tumeneon signs, which is local. And so, the trucking and the.
Oh, yeah, all the way from Frederay.
The other places.
Because, yeah, they're from Troy, but they're a big outfit. They have, I've looked at.
Who's that, Palmer?
No, the rec, the one we were reported to.
Raifenberg is, yeah.
Raifenberg. They're up in Troy, but, I mean, they're these huge jobs, and they're also in North Carolina.
Well, you know, you see Palmer paving everywhere, and I think Palmer paving did 23 10 years ago or something.
When, how long was that?
I mean, it was still here, so, like, about 10 years.
But I guess.
Do we need to mill it? Where are we at in our, never mind.
No, but, like, this is crazy. Did you look at?
I looked at it.
Look at the variability across the board.
Yeah. Yeah, but you know, some of them may have so much work. You know, contractors are still so busy, particularly in the public service because of that infrastructure stuff. Like, my son's company, they have a whole, they can't keep up with the work.
It's just really variable, and it's variable by, like, a big factor difference, you know?
It is. But we had the grant from the state on this road, right, Melissa? Is that it?
Yes.
And this will more than cover the work?
Yes.
So, I.
It's actually going to allow us possibly to do a little further.
Yeah, because it was like a million dollars, right? I was, I couldn't.
Yeah, yay.
Yeah, I'm complaining.
So, I guess I would move that based on the recommendation of Forsythe to award the Bear Town Mountain Road Project to the low bidder, Raifenberg Contract Incorporation.
I second the motion.
Is there any other discussion?
I actually also like the idea that they're more local and that they're using more local sources, and that that means they're paying for less fuel, but we're also using less fuel. I know that sounds very eco-ridiculous, but seriously, it also results in a big cost saving, so, yeah. So, that was the only other comment.
Okay, well, we'll vote?
Yep.
Yes, and yes, it's unanimous approval there. That's like capitalism working in the environment's favor.
So rare, and yet, yay.
And supporting mutual businesses, good.
Thank you.
Is this?
It's mine.
This is all yours?
Yes.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
Oh, I'll just move it over here.
No, it's fine.
We need to put a petition?
No, I just didn't, because at the end of the day, I would grab it.
I know.
You'd be missing all of it.
I was only teasing you. Okay.
So, the Financial Reserves Policy Procedures, that's with the Finance Committee.
Right.
So, I think we have a joint meeting scheduled for next week. They're not meeting between then and now, I guess.
But if we send them the policy, they can come in with informed opinion. They don't have to look at it on a giant spot, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so. And hopefully now Irene will have a key, and they will come back probably again.
It'll be pretty rough seeing the old stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, so, but yeah, obviously, if you have any other comments, just bring those later on down the road. So, here's a very good piece of news, Melissa.
Yeah, yes, we were awarded $446,000 from the rural and small town development grant for the San Sial Road Cooper project.
Great, thank you.
Well done. Was that only you?
That was me with the help of Jim.
Yay.
When would this work be done?
Hopefully next spring, summer. But once we get the official contract, Jim can pick an engineer to start working on the plans.
You guys are cranking out the funding to fix our roads and keep them up, and yay. Having talked to a few other small towns who haven't been as forward-looking, like, we're, you know, and driving on a bunch of roads around here. Like, I'm kind of impressed with how well we've kept up with stuff over the years. I mean, it doesn't mean there's no messes, but it's awesome that we're continuing to work on it in a consistent way, and I think it's really good. You got any unenthusiastic?
Yeah.
Uh-oh.
Dennis would like to sign a letter of support from the MBI from the UFRT in Detroit last week.
I also, by the way, sent one of those emails from MBI. I did see what I had referenced to.
Signify.
I did see what I had referenced to Dennis about the infrastructure funding for actually completing, like, wiring the town. Because there's 140 roughly million dollars, I think that the state has to build broadband infrastructure. And I said, because you're already working with MBI on the digital equity planning program, which I think is somewhat interrelated, would you mind just going to the technical assistance webinar that I could attend? So, he is going to, in his travels and his work with MBI, just also see how that.
Well, there's an option to use something from there to try to get those last few houses on.
Yeah, because it's, I think there's a few different parts of the digital equity planning program, including educating people and having devices and hotspots available so that people can use internet. But then the last kind of phase, or one of the phases, is making sure that the town's wired. So, in his travels on that project, he's just going to also see what he might be able to add for that.
He's good at finding untapped sources, so, yeah.
Lori informed us that it's going to be her last, well, month.
Yes, December 2nd, I think, December 1st.
I think my initial thought is, you might as well just post the ad and the job description. It's like we're secretary job description is very limited. But might as well just post it. The other thought that it kind of gets going, if she's been doing minutes for these various boards and committees. The other thought that it kind of gets going is she's been doing minutes for these various boards and committees. And we've been paying her, I think, office assistant. So I would.
Yeah, assuming she's quitting all of it.
I didn't see the notice.
I think I think we are.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, I well, I didn't notice it till this morning because.
Keep in with the minute that she said.
Yeah, she, there was two documents.
Well, you, oh, yeah, you are on there, Melissa.
Yeah.
Yep.
Um, so I just, I honestly noticed it this morning when I went to go look at the minutes.
Um, in the ten thirty one.
Yeah.
It just says select word on here.
No, but I.
I get CC'd on that.
I think.
I need. It it doesn't say anything about the other position.
Well, it's like in the body, go back to the body, didn't it now? I mean, I don't know, we can double check it for the various.
I technically worked the various words with anyone. So the unfortunately, that's unclear whether she thinks dropping the select word has given enough time for the other or whether.
No, I think it's everything. That's my sense.
Uh, the eleven six twenty twenty-three at three fifty-four P M. It's yesterday.
Did it go to Melissa rather than admin and does that?
Yeah, it went to Melissa. No, that's like, that's why, terribly boring it is. No, that was on, sorry.
So I think it just also a good time to think about how we want to because I I from going to and seeing the minutes of the the boards and committees that she's been doing minutes for, I think it's helpful to them. I think it makes minutes. Um, like I know certain people kind of are already have a lot of work to do for the border committee that they're volunteering for and it's hard to get them into the.
Do we, do we wanna call it um boards, boards plural secretary?
So.
And take it out of, we want to combine their thumbs or something?
I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what to do totally because office assistant was always intended to be a bit more than just minutes for various boards and committees.
Yeah, I mean, but really what left is like filing and stuff and she has been coming in to do that.
Yeah.
How about if I, can I just rework it a little bit and see what you guys think of it?
Yes.
I kind of was thinking that maybe calling it like an office clerk or something.
Or an office clerk and board secretary, because if we're, it it is kind of, an office clerk usually implies kind of very regular hours in an office, like
Yeah.
filing and stuff, whereas the board secretary usually means kind of weird scattered hours. Of course, she can do some of them from recordings, but I don't know that all of the boards do recorded meetings. So um like if I was looking at the job, I would have had a different expectation personally looking at those. One would be that the meetings are happening at different times and the other would be that I have regular hours and I'm just in the office. So I I don't know if other people feel that way about it, but.
Well, and and it can be, you come in one day a week for ten hours and you listen to a whole bunch of recordings.
Yeah.
But if they're all recorded, I think that there was
Well, it's your makeover.
There was something nice to uh it not working that way.
Yeah.
Um if it worked for an employee, um I also wonder if we should, as we initially did, kind of advertise separately to the degree that it worked and then we combined them, I mean, we initially had and I think also maybe an exit interview would be helpful just because we were trying out things and the position fluctuated and it doesn't seem like that's the reason why we're having turnover, but if we wanna figure out like what's going to work, make it, make it work into the future, does it work to have two separate jobs or one job? I mean, the the thinking was always if we have two, we can always combine them into one. If you have one, it's kind of harder to separate out into two.
I guess I just feel like more hours would be attractive to people. A lot of people don't really want just two or three hours here or there, you know?
Typically, how many hours a week does she work in it because she's doing all the boards?
I think it was working out to be just around eight to ten.
For select board and office assistant, and I think we have what?
Well, she was, she was doing the planning, right?
Finally, she started doing that, she started doing the Lake Garfield Working Group.
Planning.
Well, I think she did some of this, um, yeah, the planning she did.
Anyway, I think it's.
Yeah, they always use their phone and speak their phone.
I think it's a good point in time to kind of review all that stuff since now we no longer have anyone filling either position.
Yeah, and I think what you, it's getting feedback.
Yep. Um. I, it seems like it's, it makes sense to have Melissa talk to her about whether she's not comfortable putting in writing as an exit interview and get a sense of
What what?
Yeah.
And and ask her, like, what does she think would make it um most appealing to an applicant? Um divide it into two different jobs or combine into one, what would make it more appealing to someone?
Yeah, because I know she got another job, so it's just requiring one of the children.
And, you know, having a baby changes a lot, even if you don't think it will.
Yeah, well.
I I also wonder.
Fair.
I wonder, well, I don't, like, what, if we can go back to that office assistant job description and figure out like it, I feel like the minutes for the other volunteer boards, like, they're not, I think, I just think it's helpful to them and helps them get their work done.
Yeah, let me go back.
And then I guess so we have to discuss whether we wanna advertise as one or separately or how we wanna move forward. Technically, by town meeting, we have two, two, two separate lines, so we might have to keep those going to some degree, even if we have one person being paid out of two different towns. Or at least we couldn't pay them out of select board secretary to work for the building, that's right.
Yeah.
Um. Uh, you know, I have a few other things, but we're, but they're ongoing for weeks out and it's, we're reaching the two hours.
You're just putting in the final projects report and um reimbursement requests for Blue Road Chapter ninety.
Yeah.
Hundred eighty-three thousand, we're all one hundred and one, I guess, and sign both schedules, please.
Gee, this is for the the F C C C O G.
Right?
Yeah. The.
F R C O G bid?
Everybody knows, well, everybody on that side knows what it means.
What is F R C O G?
Franklin Regional Council.
Oh, there we go.
Um, and the Collins Center.
Good old Franklin.
Right, that one already has to do that work again.
Do you mind passing it?
Yeah.
So, you wanna explain, I just gave the clean up one. Okay, so um part of what was happening with why that looked so horrible is that the, this is the, sorry, ten seventeen minutes.
Okay.
Part of why that ended up looking so overwhelming is that it had all those changes and deletions and stuff in it. So this is an important thing to know about using because it's what I ended up doing. If, when you're in um Word, if you in review click no markup. It will show you, it doesn't remove anything, right? All that stuff is still there. But if you turn off markup, what you get is what remains, so all the deletions are out. And in fact, what I ended up doing was having one copy of, two copies of, one with all this stuff in there and one with delete it. So I could go out, go through and see if anything, stuff that they've got pulled that shouldn't have been or whatever. And the only real problems were a few places, the typical kind of thing where one of us deleted a sentence and the other one tried to fix the sentence. So you ended up with like a few words that were included, were in the middle of the sentence that got fixed.
Yeah.
So this, it, because it was such a mess, I just had her print it, what does it look like if you turn off markup?
Yeah.
With the fixes that I got out those extra words and
Yeah.
stuff that were done. It really wasn't that bad and I was like, oh my god, and it it really wasn't that.
And I am, and I understand, and and it's, I think that's usually what what ha- like, we're all headed in the same direction, but all it takes is two people to go for the same sentence or one person to delete it and one person to change it, so.
Oh, totally. I'm just saying, like, it's it's helpful to know that turning off markup, like, the first time I did it, I was afraid that that would actually get rid of all that stuff. No, it doesn't do that. It just doesn't show it to you. So it's a good tool to have in your arsenal when you're looking at those documents that are really big. That was why I shared, I I maybe overshared, but that was why I did it.
Yeah.
Um, and if you wanna see, I think we.
See, I can print one without the changes if you want.
I saw that. No, I saw it at the end of last week.
Okay, yeah. So.
Motion.
Motion to accept the minutes of ten seventeen as amended.
Second, any other discussion? We'll vote, yes.
Yes.
And yes. So that's unanimously approved. Um, maybe we can get through ten uh twenty-four as well.
Definitely can't do ten thirty-one, which I received this morning, so. So in two, I I don't really care if it reads a special article appropriated or the town appropriated, but it always should say one or the other.
Um.
For page number two.
Yeah.
Pick one. I don't care.
I am wondering, just looking uh in here that I'm pretty uh heavily additions were heavily included on things that I said. So I might, and I'll spend over the two hours, I might appreciate the time to a a week to go over that.
Okay.
They send it to you with every exchanges and.
Yeah, and then I'll just do what Susan did last week essentially.
Sounds good.
Cause I think that.
And my comments are on there too, so like, you know, I try to just stick with it if there's a big change or if I really have a question to just ask the person who said it to fix it.
If I, if there's any remaining things or it seems like we're headed in a different direction, then I'll bring it up next week.
Yes. Would you do it next week? Yeah. It doesn't have to be. Yay, thank you for that.
Yeah.
Like, I appreciate it that we're often on the same page, even if we're wording it differently. It's a good thing.
Should we do your ten seventeen then?
If nothing else, it shows that we're, you know, trying to pull in the same direction, which I think matters.
Yeah. Um. So I'll get back to that.
Okay.
Um.
Good. Anything else?
I don't. Oh, well, I do, like I said, I have some ongoing stuff like that I'll I'll bring up next week. Uh, nothing that.
We have a meeting. You're you're on for two o'clock, right, Melissa?
Yeah.
With Mari about the software.
Yep, okay.
Okay, Roger's coming in for it, so.
That's great.
Okay.
Any, anything further on those, what is it, second factor authentication thing?
Uh, we got, I'm gonna bring it up, we, and while we have Melissa and Roger and we're gonna have to start reading. Give them, give, I don't wanna miss that genuine attempt, they're doing.
I guess it's two factor, not seven factor.
Well, it's.
Multi-factor, oh god.
I may have found something free, though. Still guessing, yes.
Free? No.
Taking all the details, it sounds too good to be true.
Yeah, it always does, but it's free, I.
If, what if, if it's free, you're the product.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, or the candy thing. Um. Alright, motion to adjourn.
Second.
We'll vote, Dennis voted and Susan voted yes, and I vote yes to meet and adjourn at eleven o five P M.
Uh, I was.